Welcome everyone to the Township Council meeting Monday, January 24th, 2022. This meeting is now called to order.
Whenever we do that, we get all feedback.
That needs to be perfect.
Last week I left it off.
They're getting there, I think. I don't know.
All right. This is the state of the township. Today is January 24th, 2022. As 2021 comes to a close and as we embark into 2022, these surges in COVID are beginning to make it feel a lot like Groundhog Day. But I am optimistic that there are brighter days ahead. Before we discuss what we hope to see come to fruition in 2022, we look back upon 2021, or as some call it, 2020, Part Two. As we all become more familiar with the dreaded pandemic and as COVID-19 continued to make headlines across the nation, we have seen so many incredible things happen here in Little Falls over these past 12 months. And we have so many great things that we have to look forward to over the next year. Before I begin, I would be remiss if I did not mention that everything that happens in this town would not be possible if it were not for the incredible support that I receive day in and day out from all of the council members. And this past year was no exception. I would like to congratulate Council President Anthony Scobha on his reelection as council president, who has served this town well over the past five years. All of the council members worked tirelessly for the residents of Little Falls and put in countless hours to make Little Falls a great place to live. I would also like to take this opportunity to publicly thank all of the employees of this township who work so hard each and every day to keep this town up and running, especially our business administrator Chuck Cuccia, our township clerk Cynthia Kraus, and our deputy clerk Melissa DePiero. The administrative offices continue to run smoothly with minimal staffing, and your hard work does not go unnoticed. Over the past 12 months here in Little Falls, we continued to get back to normal despite COVID-19 continuing to lead every headline. Little Falls had strong attendance at its summer concerts in the park with the assistance of ABC. We continued to host outdoor movie nights and the ever-popular farmer's market, which had over 8,000 visitors throughout its 24 weeks. And this year, despite the event being cut short by rain, the township hosted its first-ever water day. I need to thank council members Seaver, Kwadi, and Havletts for their dedication to making Little Falls such a great place to live with so many events offered to people of all ages. I also need to thank our Little Falls Cert team more than ever for their service this year as they assisted at all of our major events throughout town to ensure that all remain safe. This past year, as we got back towards normal, all fall and spring sports were able to utilize the newly renovated sports and recreation complex. And the township's annual summer camp program was back in full swing thanks to our recreation director, Mr. Pace, and our assistant recreation director, Tyler Pocero. This past year, the gym floor inside the recreation center was also completely resurfaced with a new floor installed, which now officially includes lines for volleyball and pickleball, the newest and most popular sport for all ages. The new ADA accessible ramp at the civic center was also completed, now allowing easy access through the rear entrance of the building. The Little Falls Recreation Programs had over 3,900 participants across 46 youth and adult activities offered by the Recreation Department, with the newest 2021 edition of cross-country. Additionally, the Recreation Department also added a nationally-known program called Mighty Might: Bounce Out the Stigma. This was added to our Champions League program, which is an inclusive clinic-style and non-competitive program that is offered for children between the ages of four to 21 with intellectual and developmental challenges. In 2021, under the leadership of James D. Maria, the Building Department and the Township have continued to work with developers towards revitalizing, upgrading, and enhancing our township in a positive direction, which simultaneously is helping to ensure the financial future of the town. Shortly, once completed, many of the new developments which have been approved will increase the tax base and ratables for the municipality, which will greatly assist in continuing to stabilize the taxes in Little Falls while assisting in paying down the excessive debt that Little Falls has had since prior to me taking office. Developments such as 44 Main, Autumn Point, and the Abbey Sites have all been completed for some time now and have proven to have little to no impact on our schools, which was a concern of many residents here in town prior to them being developed. These three projects total 108 units and have only added two children to our schools. This past year, the previously controversial floor-area ratio formula used to calculate home sizes was amended to more appropriately address one of the major concerns in town: flooding. The Township Council was also faced with a major decision in town regarding the introduction of the cannabis ordinance. And after hearing the concerns of the residents of the township, adopted what I would consider an agreed-upon and beneficial ordinance for all residents of Little Falls. This past year, the council has continued to authorize funding for road reconstruction and for sanitary sewer improvements, for improvements to municipal facilities, and for various pieces of equipment for all of our departments. In breaking news incredibly, just this past week, we have reached historic progress with respect to the funding for the Peckman River Project, which the federal government has announced funding for to the tune of over $146 million. This is unprecedented, and once completed, will be absolutely life-changing for so many residents of Little Falls who will no longer need to worry each time it rains. While this project protects so many of our residents here in town, there is still work to be done upstream to secure funds for bank stabilization to protect the residents between Francisco Ave. and Passaic Valley High School. I will continue to work closely with the Army Corps and our Congresswoman Mikey Sherrill to finalize and fund the plan that will address and eliminate flooding caused by the Peckman River. This is relief that many Little Falls residents need to help them sleep better at night, knowing that their homes are not one rainstorm away from flooding. The Little Falls Library continues to adapt to the times of COVID-19 and while reopened to the public, continue to provide many events virtually. I have continued to meet with the DOT and surrounding towns to address the issues such as traffic caused by the Route 46 and 3 construction project and have diligently been following up with these meetings to ensure this project continues with as little delay as possible, which I have been happy to see making substantial progress. Most recently, within the next week, to better assist in flowing traffic through Little Falls, especially during rush hour, the timing of the traffic lights will be modified to allow for more vehicles to make their to make it through the traffic lights on Main Street during the highest traffic times. With respect to our Police Department, this past year, the Little Falls Police Department, led by Chief Steve Post, continues to maintain its accreditation as a department due to the policies and procedures that have been instituted to ensure the safety of our department and our residents. This year, the department recently received some surprising news with the announcement by Chief Post of his upcoming retirement in 2022. I want to take this opportunity to sincerely thank Chief Post for his service to this township for more than 27 years and for his dedication to making this department as incredible as it is. I wish him nothing but success, prosperity, and health in his future endeavors. This past year, under his leadership, the Little Falls Police Department has responded to 17,970 calls for service, averaging over 49 calls per day. There were 839 motor vehicle crashes, 3,624 radar posts, and 133,983 miles patrolled, all within a town that's less than three square miles. As we progress into 2022, there will be some changes within the Police Department to better serve the residents of Little Falls. Recently, Lieutenant Brian Prawl was promoted to the rank of Deputy Chief as he transitions into his future role of Chief of the Little Falls Police Department. I want to congratulate Deputy Chief Prawl on his well-deserved and merited promotion. Under Deputy Chief Prawl, the residents of Little Falls can continue to look forward to a reaffirmed commitment to community policing and upcoming Coffee with a Cop events. The Little Falls Police Department will continue to support the Law Enforcement Against Drug Program in the schools and continue to run its Junior Police Academy. In the near future, the Little Falls Police Department will be launching a town-wide information dissemination campaign titled Little Falls Information Network for Awareness, or LFINFA. The goal of this program is to utilize existing technology platforms such as Facebook, Instagram, and Code Red, while also expanding into others to communicate and disseminate information to all residents, businesses, owners, and visitors to Little Falls. As this program is instituted, more information will be provided. During 2022, Deputy Chief Prawl intends to reinstitute the Special Police Officer Program. These officers, once trained and in place, will allow us the flexibility to bolster the department's capabilities with community policing, traffic enforcement, and patrol-related duties. They will also serve as a force multiplier during states of emergency or when additional manpower is necessary. Another priority of Deputy Chief Prawl is to resurrect another once-vibrant program, the Police K-9. Unlike the traditional K-9 that everyone knows, the Little Falls Police K-9 will be different. The Police K-9's mission will be to comfort, support, and enhance the quality of life for those who are suffering from a personal condition or community crisis utilizing the human K-9 bond and its power to heal. The Police K-9 will be integrated into the Community Policing Bureau and will assist with all community goodwill programs. Additionally, the K-9 will assist victims of crime, incidents involving children, tragedies that may affect our community, and improve the overall mental health and wellness of our own officers and community members. I would like to take this opportunity to thank each and every one of the members of the Little Falls Police Department for their service, as well as their families, who selflessly say goodbye to their loved ones who work during holidays, emergencies, and all hours of the day and night. The council and I continue to keep the safety of the residents in the forefront of our minds. In this past year, in an effort to assist with an ongoing issue in town, the council approved the installation of the first speed humps as part of a pilot initiative. This year, speed humps were added to Jacobus Avenue in Vampel, and follow-up meetings with the residents will be scheduled to determine whether this program continues on additional streets through Little Falls in the future. I would like to thank Councilman Ventchieri for his continued dedication to the transportation-related issues in this municipality. This year, I am hopeful that the installation of the traffic light at the intersection of Francisco Ave. and Cedar Grove and Wilmore Roads will be completed, adding a level of safety for everyone that uses that intersection on a daily basis. In furtherance of this council's dedication to safety, this year, due to staffing issues in the past, the Little Falls EMS program is moving to a full-time program. While the EMS program being run in Little Falls over the past few years was a substantial improvement compared to the times of volunteers responding to calls for help, by moving to a full-time EMS program here in Little Falls, no longer should any Little Falls resident wait for an ambulance to respond during their time of need. All of these major improvements are being made under the guidance of EMS Coordinator Mike Banderski, who has spent countless hours ensuring that the Little Falls EMS program runs smoothly and efficiently as possible to provide this incredible service to Little Falls residents. In 2022, the Little Falls Fire Department will be led by its newly-elected chief, Ken Sici. Last year, the township acquired a new ladder truck that will be housed at Company 1 on Wilmore Road. This ladder truck has been in service almost all year here in Little Falls and is a great addition to the fleet of fire vehicles keeping our residents safe. The Little Falls Fire Department, less than 24 hours after Chief Sici was elected, was called to duty for a working fire at Montclair State University in a dormitory. The Little Falls Fire Department quickly jumped into action knocking down the fire while ensuring everyone's safety, including all of the members of the department. Thankfully, the residents of this township can sleep with the peace of mind that the Little Falls Fire Department is ready to jump into action any time of day, no matter the weather. I want to thank each and every member of the Little Falls Fire Department for their dedication to the residents of this township. In 2021, under the guidance of DPW Superintendent Ron Campbell, the Little Falls DPW continued to keep up with its traditions of making sure that Little Falls roadways were back to black immediately following every snowstorm. This 15-man crew is responsible for maintaining all of our parks and fields throughout the town, as well as maintaining nearly 140 various lots that were affected by FEMA buyouts. To assist in doing so, this past year, the DPW received two new Ferris lawn mowers, which mow and mulch at the same time, increasing the DPW's efficiency and productivity. This year, Wilmore Park has never looked so good with its new plantings and holiday decor. The Little Falls roadways have also remained clean all year round, which has been made easier with the township's new street sweeper. In 2021, the township also received the excavator that was recently acquired under a grant to assist in keeping the Peckman River clear from shovels and debris as we continue to keep the maintenance of this river at the forefront of our minds. The Little Falls DPW has also been tasked with maintaining Little Falls a litter-free community. In 2021, an objective of the DP I'm sorry, in 2022, an objective of the DPW is to ensure that Little Falls remains litter-free as we strive to maintain a clean community. In the face of adversity, so much has been accomplished here in Little Falls in 2021. Little Falls began its streetscape on Maple Street, which was funded entirely by a grant from the DOT. And in the upcoming spring, that streetscape will continue to make its way down Main Street from Maple to Center Ave. The streetscape will bring our downtown and community into the 21st century as we revitalize our downtown and bring back its curb appeal. The streetscape will include decorative streetlights, as well as new curbs and sidewalks, along with modern garbage receptacles and benches and areas for everyone to enjoy. I have truly enjoyed serving this township as mayor over the past five years, and I want to thank all of you for placing your trust in me as your mayor during this time. This council and I, as we have from the onset, remain dedicated to our promise of transparency. Over this next year, I hope to host several more Town Hall-style meetings on Zoom, allowing everyone to attend from the comfort of their own homes. I have truly enjoyed each day that I have been fortunate enough to serve as your mayor. While I've said this last year, I really do look forward to getting back to normal and what the future of this township has in store. As always, if you have, if you ever have any issues, no matter how big or small, no matter day or night, I invite you to contact me by any means. I look forward to continuing to serve as your mayor, and I wish everyone health and happiness in 2022. Thank you. Now, before the council comes back to the dais, I have two proclamations that I would like to read this evening. The first is Recognizing Cervical Cancer Awareness Month, and the second is Recognizing Holocaust Remembrance Day. Whereas cervical cancer is a disease that affects over 13,000 American women each year, often in the prime of their lives. And whereas regular cervical cancer screening tests are effective in detecting the disease early when it can be effectively treated, as there are formidable means of preventing cervical cancer. Cervical cancer disproportionately impacts vulnerable communities lacking access to healthcare and proven lifesaving tools. And whereas increasing awareness regarding the best use of preventative tools is a key component in safeguarding women's health, now therefore be it resolved that I, Mayor James Belford-Damiano, on behalf of the Little Falls Township Council, do hereby proclaim January 2022 as Cervical Cancer Awareness Month in the township of Little Falls. And now, a proclamation recognizing Holocaust Remembrance Day. Whereas International Holocaust Remembrance Day is held on January 27th of each year and is a day for the world to pause and remember the millions of people whose lives were taken or forever changed by the Holocaust. And whereas in 2005, the United Nations adopted a resolution rejecting any denial of the Holocaust as a historical event, either in full or in part, in condemning without reserve all manifestations of religious intolerance, incitement, harassment, or violence against persons or communities based on ethnic origin or religious belief, whenever they occur. The resolution also designated January 27th the anniversary of the Libertarian of Auschwitz Death Camp as an annual international day of commemoration in memory of the victims of the Holocaust. And whereas on this day, member states of the United Nations are encouraged to develop educational programs to instill the memory of the tragedy in future generations and in order to help prevent future acts of genocide. And whereas today, we join all those whose lives were affected by the Holocaust, we remember their strength, courage, and bravery, and will continuously work to make sure their stories are remembered. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Mayor James Belford-Damiano, on behalf of the Township Council, do hereby proclaim January 27th, 2022 as International Holocaust Remembrance Day in the township of Little Falls. I want to thank the council for giving me this opportunity to present the annual state of the township. And I turn the dais back to you.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd ask to have a motion to amend the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Ventchieri.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Kwadi. This is DPR. Can you please call the roll to amend the agenda?
Councilmember Havletts?
Yes.
Councilmember Kwadi?
Yes.
Councilmember Seaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Ventchieri?
Yes.
Council President Scobha?
Yes. Have a motion to open to the public for questions regarding, questions or comments for only regarding the mayor's state of the township.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Ventchieri, second by Councilmember Havletts. This is DPR. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Havletts?
Yes.
Councilmember Kwadi?
Yes.
Councilmember Seaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Ventchieri?
Yes.
Council President Scobha?
Yes. So this public session is just for the state of the township by the mayor. For the, the floor is open if anyone would like to have any questions or comments.
Louis Fernandez, 54 Harrison Street?
Good evening.
How are you?
Good.
I'm glad, one of the things that you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, in the new speech is that the grant that the township is going to receive from the federal government, the amount is incredible. It's always welcome though. And just to show you how happy he was, the mayor I'm talking about. He sent to my house not once, twice. I guess he the only thing that is missing, it should have been one, it's the other one. But other than that, I'm very happy that this grant is, is taking place. It's definitely, in my opinion, a good step forward to solve the problems of many residents that have suffered, lives that were lost, and many memories that were lost as well. And I read, I read the letter that you sent me, and you thanked quite a few people. I'd like to, but in my opinion, the only person that is not mentioned and should have been mentioned first and foremost is a lady that fought for many, many years for Little Falls. I think you know what I'm talking about. Dorothy O'Hara. Dorothy, Dorothy O'Hara should have been first on the list, not Congressman Pascal, who served, has been serving 25 years. And after 25 years, you see this, this grant. Or many other people. People that did the job, day in and day out. They took time away from their families to serve this community, and they did it for free. Congressman Pascal and all the others, they get paid to serve this community. This community and the other, the district that they represent. But Dorothy O'Hara did it on her own, without ever asking for money, because she loved the community that she was part of, and she loved the little, the residents of Little Falls. And I think she put herself into a, she saw the pain of many residents that lost everything. And she was fighting for them, and she fought like a, like a, like a cougar. And for that, I'd like to, I'd like to thank her. I don't know whatever happened to her. She used to come to the, to the meetings quite often, and we haven't seen her for quite a while. But I hope she's well, and I hope she can listen to these words that if the grant that the township is going to get, if this project is going to go through, is mainly in part because of the great effort and the great dedication that this lady has and the love for Little Falls that this lady has. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fernandez. Mayor? Sure. So first, regarding the project. As far as I'm concerned, this project cannot happen fast enough. The final engineering, the design, and the actual construction of it is long overdue. And I am incredibly appreciative of the fact that we have gotten to this point. and I am incredibly appreciative of the fact that we have gotten to this point with the real light at the end of the tunnel for all of you in Jackson Park. Now, Ms. O'Hare is still a member of our floodboard. I certainly thanked the floodboard in that letter that was sent to you, because they have been, and she in particular, has been instrumental in achieving that goal of that grant that we received from the federal government, as well as the excavator that we now have on hand in order to keep the shoals in the river clean moving forward. So there is no doubt that she has been an advocate for this township and for securing all of these funds related to the Peckman River, and her work certainly does not go unnoticed.
Mr. Kuscha, is there any residents who would like to speak on Zoom? See no other residents that want to come forth regarding the mayor's state of the township? Can I have a motion to close to the public?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Quadi, second by Councilmember Vincherry. All those in favor opposing to the public signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed that motion, please signify by saying nay if the motion carries. We'll move on to council reports. Councilman Quadi, please lead us off.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, Mayor, for the state of the township address. We are moving forward in so many ways. There is one thing that the mayor didn't mention that I want to make sure the residents are aware of. Even though the Jackson Park, the culvert that was discussed is, you know, one step closer to reality, we are still pursuing solutions for other parts of the Peckman River. And I don't want anybody to think that we have forgotten about those other sections that affect Hops and Ave and Reiner's Road and upstream as well. So we are in constant pursuit. Councilman Vincherry runs the floodboard. We are in constant pursuit of other avenues and solutions for other sections of the Peckman River, and so I just don't want anybody to think that this is the end of our work as far as flood mitigation for the Peckman goes. I was at the Little Falls Board of Education meeting last week, and the LFEF made a presentation. They are giving out over eight thousand dollars in grants to different projects across all three schools, and I expressed my appreciation for them there, and I want to do it here as well. They do so much for our children, and what you do for our children, you do for our community. And so we really appreciate the LFEF, and they have an event coming up, I believe it's March twenty fifth, their casino night, and I encourage anyone to attend. It is a great organization, and it's a great night out as well. The mayor and I were lucky enough to host the Boyce, excuse me, the Cub Scouts here on Thursday night. They do an annual event where they ask about the government, and we set up here, and we're grilled as hard as any council meeting we've ever been at, much to our surprise, I think. I think we were expecting a little bit more questions about how the government works, and we got questions about what we're doing and how we do and why we do it. And so it was, it was a really informative night for them, and it was an interesting night for us and a good night for us as well. That's it for me. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilmember Quadi. Councilmember Havletts?
Thank you, Council President. So I would also like to thank the mayor for our state of the town and to thank the mayor and my fellow council members, just for your great accomplishments for our town and hoping to have an even better two thousand and twenty two with more improvements to come. Some library updates this week, actually tomorrow, the library will be hosting a Valentine's Day virtual cooking class with Heather from Chaperite tomorrow at six thirty PM, and you can register on the library website. Also to remind everyone that storytime for the children is still going strong every Thursday in January at eleven AM. And this Wednesday, there is also a Calder art workshop. The children will learn about the artist Alexander Calder and create a Calder-inspired wire sculpture. This event is for children eight and over, and you can also register at the library website. Also, backed by popular demand this year, we are going to be having our Little Falls Shred Event here at the Municipal Building on Saturday, April thirtieth, from nine to one. The event is free for Little Falls residents. It's for paper and electronic recycling, and further details are on the township website. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Havletts. Councilmember Vincherry?
Thanks, Council President. First, want to start off and say thanks to Mayor Damiano for updating the residents on the state of the township and just kind of going through not only the accomplishments, but also thanking every one of the employees of this township, ranging from our police department, our fire, EMS, to the staff here in this building, DPW, as well as even the volunteers like the SERC team. You know, like the mayor said, it's not just one person that pulls this all together. So many people involved, so grateful for that. And hopefully, two thousand twenty two is the year where we sort of get back to normal. I also want to echo, you know, what Councilman Quadi said, you know, recently with the grant that came through to help the folks that live along the Peckman near Jackson Park. It's great news, and I'm glad finally something is happening because it's taken forever. But we also don't want to lose sight that there's others that still have some issues that we're trying to address. And, you know, it was interesting last week when the news came, a few people reached out and said, what about us? We're working on that, and the mayor has been working behind the scenes to try to secure some funding federally. And then I also connected last week with Free Holder Director, well Commissioner Director now, Mr. Bruce James, to talk about the bridge that is on Main Street. Because for those of you that live on Hops and Ave like myself or near PV High School, what typically happens is when there is a backup of trees and debris under the bridge that is on Main Street, it creates a dam effect, and then we have a nice four-foot wave coming down our street and also causing a lot of damage as it did this past September, as well as not only to our street, but also to PV High School. So my conversation with the Commissioner Director was simple. You guys have to help us when it comes to this bridge. Need to send an engineer out here and make some improvements to avoid this happening again, because like Jackson Park, every time it rains, we're all on pins and needles wondering what's going to happen, and we don't want to do that. And so I put that onus on the director to make this happen, and I'm going to keep harping as well, because it's, it's interesting when people think that, oh, you're not helping out. No, we are helping out behind the scenes, and there's things that we have to do to get done, but we are calling on our county to help us, and I'm hoping that they will address that bridge as soon as possible, because like the mayor said, there's a lot to be done. And the other thing, too, I want to acknowledge is the one thing the mayor has been doing, and Mr. Fernandez, so you know, Mrs. O'Hare was here last month for our regional floodboard, is he's had conversations with Verona and Cedar Grove, because a lot of the debris, too, that does make its way to Little Falls is not from Little Falls, it's from the other town. So the mayor has done a good job of extending that olive branch, as have the other two towns, Verona and Cedar Grove, because they are working together. And recently, you know, we had our excavator in, of course, cleaning up the Peckman, and they were doing the same thing. So I think when both the two counties are working together, all the towns are involved, you know, we can make this a success, but there's still work to be done. You know, this grant is a first stage, but there's still a lot along the bank, so hopefully we'll be in a good place there. But again, it's something we'll have to keep pushing, and believe me, we are trying to help everyone when it comes to the Peckman. There's a couple of other things I do want to mention. On the fifteenth of January, myself and Councilwoman Havletts had a very nice Zoom conversation with the Girl Scouts Robotics Team, led by their head scout leader, Mrs. Colleen Larenoff. Prior to the team presenting their robotics project, we had a chance to listen to their presentation and have them kind of go through what they created, and I just want to send kudos to the girls, because they actually, through their presentation, won first place for core values at the New Jersey, Pennsylvania FLL Explore Robotics Festival. So it was great to see that these young girls are advanced with robotics. I mean, unfortunately, we didn't have robotics when we were in school, but to see what they're doing. So I want to give kudos, of course, to Ella, Madeline, Peyton, Evelyn, and Camilla, and just say, great job. And the one thing we did talk about, too, as we were with the girls on Zoom, is at some point having them bring their project together, present to the mayor and council, and maybe have it showcased in town for other residents to see. So it's nice to see something like that come together. There's a couple other activities that are taking place I just want to put on people's radar screen. You know, this year, we are bringing back the Memorial Day Parade. You know, we've missed it for two years, and we want to get it back. So I'm pleased to announce that the parade is going to take place on Saturday, May twenty eighth. It will start at ten AM. We will be at the same location that we've always been, finish up around like eleven fifteen, eleven thirty, and then the services to honor the men and women that gave the ultimate sacrifice will take place afterwards. I did put out a blast this week to let people know, because we are looking for participants, whether you're a club, a local business, an organization, classic cars, you know, we want to get everybody involved. I'm working on securing bands. Unfortunately, we don't have St. Valley High School this year, but I'm working on to get a few other things, and really want to make this a nice parade, because I think we've all missed it the last couple of years. The other thing that we're working on, too, is the night before, we will bring back our annual concert in the park on Friday, May twenty seventh. Again, more information is coming, because we're going to look to have vendors like we've had previously out there, you know, whether selling or handing out information. We'd love to have also, you know, someone from the fire department and police out there as well, because they have items and they get a chance to meet with the residents as well. So Deputy Chief, I know you're here, we'll definitely talk about that. Councilwoman Havletts, I know, will be working with me to secure some other vendors. I've already worked on pulling together a couple bands that are going to perform and some other activities. So, you know, as we try to get back to normal, I'm hoping that, you know, we'll start to be able to do the things that we've enjoyed for a long time in this town. Lastly, I do want to mention two more things, and I'm done. I don't want to think I'm going to be here forever, guys, sorry. I do want to say thanks to Mayor Damiano, Chief Post, and Lieutenant Briggs. I know the mayor addressed this previously in the state of the township, but this week, you know, our engineers are going to be addressing our two traffic lights on Main and Union, as well as over on Main and Stevens, to add some extended seconds that will help with the flow of traffic. You know, residents had reached out with concerns, we looked into this, and, you know, it's good to see this coming together. So I think everyone that's involved in this and having that extra time will be beneficial, especially making the left, because a lot of times people are using apps like Waze to navigate through our town versus going on forty six. My last item is, I had a conversation last week with the general manager of the New Jersey Jackals. Jackals are coming back this season, and we are in the process of coordinating what is going to be Little Falls Night, which will take place on Friday, June third. We're looking to have an opportunity for local businesses to be a part of this. We'll have, of course, the children in town for the various sports having the ability to walk on the field as part of the pregame ceremonies. We're going to have Mayor Damiano work on the arm over the springtime, so he can throw out the first pitch, and so we're looking forward to that. And the other thing, too, I do want to acknowledge with the Jackals is, on June fourth, the next night, they are actually celebrating twenty five years as an organization in Little Falls. So we're looking forward to working with the organization again, and one thing that they're looking to do is try to get a good presence of Little Falls residents at games throughout the year. So they are working on a number of different discount programs, whether it's for, you know, kids who sign up for the rec department, or senior citizens, or other residents. You know, they want to make that family atmosphere come back the way it was when they first came like twenty five years ago. So looking forward to that. More details, I've talked enough, that's it for me. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilmember Vincherry. Councilmember Seaver, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, Mayor, for your address to the public tonight. So can't believe just a couple months that we ended the farmer's market, we are already going out to begin our applications, which will be going out shortly for the next season for the farmer's market, where we will be inviting back some of our key vendors, as well as looking for some new ones. So excited to continue that next season for Municipal Alliance. I don't know how many people noticed at the last meeting, but we do have a new head of our Municipal Alliance, so looking forward to bringing some new events in that fashion. Also, just kind of a comment that we have so many great events happening through the town, whether through our school system, our PV high school, I know myself, Councilman Vincherry, Councilwoman Havletts, last night attended our PV band, Tricky Train, which was a great event. So I really do, really encourage everybody to follow things on social media, encourage to participate, donate. There's so many great causes happening right here in town that affect our residents. Also, just a comment that we are currently still working on and looking, hopefully, to have a solution in terms of Wilmore Park. I know we've received some resident feedback in terms of the condition of our Wilmore Park playground, and we're looking to have that all settled up this year, as well as improving our Juva playground area. So we're looking, hopefully, to have that all complete this coming fiscal year. That is all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Seaver. Mayor, thank you for your State of the Union, State of the Township address, someday maybe State of the Union.
No, thank you.
To give a synopsis of what has transpired is not easy to do, to inform the community of the many activities and policies that you've put in place. Look forward to two thousand twenty two, working with you and Councilmember Seaver on the budget, which is the next, next big step that we have. We're always moving forward here, and we're never done in public service. So thank you, Mayor. On February the tenth, the Senior Advisory is going to hold Dessert and Dancing at the Civic Center from one to three thirty PM. For those interested in attending, please reach out to Janet Cohen. Her number is nine seven three, six three four, two three seven two. Again, that's nine seven three, six three four, two three seven two, and that's February, I'm sorry, did I say the tenth? February the fourteenth, I apologize. It's Valentine's Day, February the fourteenth. At this time, Deputy Chief Pearl, would you like to come up and tell us what you have in store for two thousand twenty two for your department?
Good. First, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Mayor Damiano and the rest of the Township Council for your confidence in me leading the department into the future. Again, this is a tremendous honor. Two thousand twenty one was another challenging year for our department and the law enforcement profession. Each of our officers should be commended for rising above those challenges and unselfishly performing their duties. I look forward to working together alongside each member of the Little Falls family in the coming year. While we can't anticipate every challenge tomorrow will bring, I assure you that we will collaborate, work together, and overcome those challenges as a team. We will succeed. Mayor Damiano touched upon a lot of the things that I had as ideas for two thousand twenty two, most notably was the Information Network for Awareness, or LF Info. I think that's kind of like a resounding theme, and Councilman, when you brought it up, PV Band, or, you know, the Municipal Alliance, how can we get out and kind of consolidate the information gathering and dissemination? So that's something that we're going to look to overcome as an agency in two thousand twenty two. Coffee with a Cop is scheduled for April sixth. That feedback?
Can you just move closer to the mic, Chief, when you're speaking? Thank you.
Is that better?
Yes.
April sixth, if you want to put it on your calendars, we're going to do a Coffee with a Cop, we're going to do it at the Falls Kitchen. I'd like to invite all community members to attend. We'll have some coffee and some light refreshments. We're going to fully support our lead program, which already kicked off. I don't know if you saw the article that was in the St. Valley today. We're going to continue to support our Junior Police Academy that will be scheduled in the summertime, our Fourth of July Festival, and then National Night Out, to name a few of those initiatives. Mayor Damiano touched on the Special Police Officer Program, the Police Canine Program. And January ninth was National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. So I think it's a paramount importance that community members acknowledge not only that day, but every day, what law enforcement profession does for them on a daily basis. Officers across this country will unfortunately always hear the criticisms front and center when something goes wrong. And we've been witness to the law enforcement profession coming under constant attack by social media and inordinate news outlets over the past few years. I just implore everyone to disregard the noise and focus on the positive, knowing a majority exists who support our agency. I am resolute in knowing that this majority exists within the community of Little Falls. It exists today, and it will continue into tomorrow. Lastly, I'd like to thank and acknowledge our officers' families. I know their officer's commitment and sacrifices to law enforcement are not born alone. We should never forget that while our officers are at work during the holidays, emergency overtime, or working adverse hours, there are family members working behind the scenes that keep it all together. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Chief Pearl, for your time this evening. Councilor Wenzel, do you have anything for us this evening? We'll move on forward. Have a motion to open the meeting for the public for agenda items only. Moved by Councilmember Seaver. Second by Councilmember Vincherry. All those in favor of opening to the public signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion signify by saying nay. Mrs. DPR, can you please read the public comment?
Anyone wishing to address the Township Council may do so through the Council President. Please give your name and address for the record. Comments are to be limited to three minutes. However, if appropriate, you may be granted additional time, as sole decision of a Council President. Members of the public who have joined the meeting, welcome. Members of the public who have joined the meeting virtually and desire to provide comments shall raise their virtual hand in the Zoom application. The meeting moderator will cue the members of the public that wish to provide comment, and the Council President will recognize them in order. Members of the public who have joined the meeting by calling in must press star six to mute and unmute themselves, and star nine to raise their hand. Members of the public who have joined the meeting via Zoom application may click the reaction icon and then raise hand icon. Please give your name and address for the record. Once the process is complete, we will return to the regular order of business.
Thank you, Ms. DePiero. The floor is now open.
Louis Fernandez, Harrison Street. I must say that when I saw the agenda this afternoon, well, I saw it a couple days ago. I was surprised that, so I was told, I was told by Councilmember Vincieri, that the, there will be an ordinance regarding Harrison Street, and I don't see anything. I was, I was wondering what happened. In, back in November, I was told that it will be in the new year, 2022. At the last workshop meeting, I was told that it will be today, but I still don't see. So I was wondering what is, what is happening? Did you change your mind, or, or what? And wait for an answer.
Councilmember Vincieri, would you like to address Mr. Fernandez's question regarding Harrison Street?
Yeah, it's going to be on the agenda for next meeting. We couldn't get it on this one, unfortunately, so it'll be on the next one. So we are still moving ahead with it, so.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Kuscha, is anyone would like to speak in Zoom? Seeing no else, I would, is going to approach the podium, have a motion to close the public.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember, sorry, moved, moved by Councilmember Seaver, second by Councilmember Vincieri. All those in favor of closing to the public comments signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose that motion, please signify by saying nay. Motion carries. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Does anyone have any issues with the consent agenda? Have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Seaver.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Havletts. Ms. DePiero, please call the role on the consent agenda.
Councilmember Havletts?
Yes.
Councilmember Quadi?
Yes.
Councilmember Seaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Vincieri?
Yes.
Council President Scoban?
Yes. Have a motion to open the meeting for public matters, for public, general matters.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Quadi.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Vincieri. All those in favor, to open the meeting for general matters, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose that motion, please signify by saying nay. The floor is now open for general matters. Mr. Kuscha, is there anyone in Zoom? No. See no one coming forward. Have a motion to close to the public comment for general matters.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Seaver.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Vincieri. All those in favor of closing the meeting for general matters signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose this meeting, all those oppose signify by saying nay. Motion does carry. At this time, have a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Quadi, second by Councilmember Vincieri. All those in favor of adjourning this meeting on January 24th, 2022 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. This meeting is now closed.